Call the meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Dave Abdullah.
Here.
Thomas Berry.
Here.
Robert Constant.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Margaret Horvath is absent. Joseph Kaczynski.
Here.
Ray Musket.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by our Director of Public Work, Bill Zimmer.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve the Order of Business October 24, 2017, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council as presented.
Second.
Second by Councilman Abdullah. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the October 10, 2017 meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Kaczynski.
Move that the minutes for the last formal meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council dated October 10 be approved as submitted.
Support.
Support by Councilman Musket. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on our agenda, item five, is public comment on pending agenda items. Does anyone have any comment on any items pending on our agenda? Hearing none. The next item on our agenda, item six, fund transfers and current claims.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry.
Motion to approve current claims 6-1 through 639.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Clayton. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Musket.
I have a question on 624, which is PM Technologies requested by our police chief. I thought we approved a maintenance agreement for this.
I don't know if anybody's here to answer. Chief is here.
We did approve. I didn't think it included the preventive maintenance.
You know, I'd like to look at that because, you know, I questioned it before about the preventative maintenance, about belts and oil and things of that nature. But the reason why I believe I voted yes on it was because they did a load bank test, which we couldn't do. But if they're going to come out and charge us for a load bank test and all the other items, what good is a maintenance agreement if they're not going to do this? I mean, you're paying a maintenance agreement, then you're going to pay them again to do maintenance. I just don't understand the logic behind that.
You know, I'll look into it. I know we had discussion. There was two companies we were looking at, and, you know, they didn't approve the first company.
Correct.
And then we went back and got some, you know, more bids, and we worked with fire chief.
But again, my question is, if we're going to be paying for a maintenance company to, you know, an agreement, I don't see why we have to pay them to come out and do a load maintenance test on it. That's $625. That should be part of the maintenance. That's what a maintenance agreement is. In all the years that I done maintenance and worked with maintenance companies, part of that is them honoring a maintenance agreement. So I'd like to look into that contract, and I think I'll contact our clerk's office and see if I can find that contract, if you don't mind.
I'll look into it tomorrow.
All right, thank you, sir.
I'm sure we have it, and see what we come up with.
Any other questions? Any other discussion? Councilman Abdullah.
Mine was not so much of a question, but more a little bit of a, well, a question for the mayor, but just a little bit more of an update since we're on that item. It was in regards to Aquasight. I know that was a great addition to our city services that the mayor had brought on at the time, and I'm just, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, if there was any type of update on that, and for those that are not familiar with it, maybe a little bit of a briefing as to what it is.
I believe, I call it like the analyticals of water quality safety. And we entered into the agreement, what it does, it takes data from testing and analytically charts it out, and then gives warning to our water department employees on things we need to be aware of if certain water quality conditions not get in the bad area, but just start to decline. And so it gives us a safe time to do maintenance and fixes before we have a crisis. Very pleased with it. We met with the Great Lakes Water Authority yesterday, I believe, yeah, today's Tuesday, so yesterday, and I brought the subject up, and the Great Lakes Water Authority is looking at partnering, and I encouraged them and told them how we believe it's been successful. And so I believe it will ultimately get included in other communities. So Great Lakes Water Authority said that they would, they're thinking of doing a test, kind of a sample test in regards to, and I volunteered our community since we already have it up and running. So I think it's proven to be excellent. It's told us a couple instances where we've been monitoring it, so we're very pleased with it, and it ensures safety of our water quality.
Okay, because I know we had some hesitations, because a lot of us were not that familiar with this particular company or this particular type of a program, so.
And at some point, we could do one of two things. If the council would like to get together and go down to the water department and see an on-hand demonstration of it, we would be more than happy to provide that and show you firsthand how our employees are engaging with it.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the original motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 8A, from Mayor Dan Pletko, purchase of the Warren Valley Golf Course and Banquet Center.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry.
Just so you're all aware, but Mr. Miyake did provide a package with a resolution.
Yep.
I move that City Council concur and approve the purchase of the Warren Valley Golf Course from Wayne County and the Banquet Center in the amount of $1.8 million, an authorized payment to Wayne County, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign it on behalf of the city, and also I'm looking for the resolution.
Hold on.
Here.
Here, I think it says.
To approve.
Councilman, it's the last two pages of the packet that I submitted to you, and the only thing I would note, as stuteley pointed out by our treasurer, is that in the fourth paragraph where it says Wayne City, it should be Wayne County. Other than that, it should be good to go.
Second.
If I need to approve the resolution.
Oh.
I move City Council approve the resolution, purchase and lease of the real property constituting Warren Valley Golf Course as outlined in 8A.
With the change in paragraph four, from Wayne City to Wayne County. And do you think we should, we don't need to read the whole ordinance?
I don't believe you do.
Our resolution.
Yeah, no, the resolution.
Supported by Councilman Abdullah. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Musket.
This is a big decision that the City Council has done. I have to admit, when this came forward to us quite a while ago, I was gung ho on a sale of this because of C dollar signs of revenue coming into the city, but cooler heads prevailed, and I want to thank Marge Horvath, who finally spoke up right away and reminded us about the flooding issues of Warren Valley, and it kind of reopened my eyes up quite a bit. And so I just want to touch base on that. But my second item is, even though I am going to support this 100%, I just feel a government entity should never own a business. I don't believe Wayne County should have owned it. I don't believe any government entity should own a business for profit. To me, it's, it just doesn't seem right, but I don't think we have a choice for the benefit of this city and its residents to keep our homes from flooding. I think this is the best thing we can possibly do. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to add that I support the purchase of the golf course based on the idea that we have talked about and heard from our residents that include the fact that it's a floodplain. There's designated wetlands there. We want to keep it a green space for recreation opportunities. And with that, you know, we talk about the liability of the potential flooding and even the infrastructure challenges, so that's more important, the reason that I want to encourage the council body to explore and take necessary steps to get the legal action, the legal language in place to truly preserve the golf course from future, you know, infrastructure, or excuse me, development there, housing development and such. So I wanted to say that I will continue to advocate and seek the legal language to protect our community and our residents based on their best interest. I want to thank our residents for the input. I want us to encourage that, to continue to seek input on this golf course and what happens with it from our residents as a public space, and look at the recreation opportunities. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Chairman. Mayor Pletko.
I know I'm going to forget some people, but there were so many involved in getting this to where it is. A couple people that I want to pay special attention to was Corporation Council Gary Miyake, who greatly carried this over to the goal line, and that was no easy task. Thank you, Gary, for all your work and effort. I want to thank our county commissioner for everything you did. We wouldn't have gotten anywhere near this thing without your help. And the county chairman also helped us, Mr. Warrenchuck, and there were other members on the county commission, but I, many of you may not be aware, but he really looked out for our best interests, and I want to give him credit for what he did. Many department heads, there's just so many that participated, Tifa. It really was a group project and showed, I think, the capabilities of this community, and I'm really proud of this decision. I think it is monumental, and I'm excited about it.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to thank our city attorney Gary Miyake and everyone else. Hopefully, this property will remain as a golf course because Wayne County decided they no longer wanted to operate it. We were faced with the challenge, and I think this is a good opportunity for the city. I'd like to see it remain the jewel that it is in Dearborn Heights.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry.
Well, I know that you've all had an opportunity to thank each other for what you've done, but I'd like to personally thank the mayor for recognizing the opportunity and jumping on it. I think it was the right move. I think the residents in this city will benefit years to come. Hopefully, one day, that golf course will be somewhat tagged with your name on it, because I think it deserves, it deserves that much recognition for the effort and the recognition that you put into it. Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
Well, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion and adopting the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 8B, also from Mayor Pletko, reappointment Act 78 Police and Fire Civil Service Commission.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Musket.
I move council concur with Mayor Pletko in a reappointment of Martin Crandall of 23542 Military, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, to the Act 78 Police and Fire Civil Service Commission as outlined in 8B.
Second. Second by Councilman Kaczynski. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9A, from Treasurer John Riley, investment of funds report for September 30, 2017. Mr. Chairman. Councilman Kaczynski.
I move council concur with the recommendation of Treasurer John Riley and the advice of Plank Moran for the recording of this document to be presented to the council, the investment report dated September 30, 2017, all consistent with good management practices as established and advised by Plank Moran.
And receive, note, and file the report.
Support, Mr. Chairman.
Support by Councilwoman Clayton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, from Public Service Administrator Bill Zimmer, Dome Corporation of America Agreement.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Musket.
I move council approve the agreement between Dearborn Heights and Dome Corporation of America to demolish and rebuild the Salt Dome and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the document as outlined in 9B.
Second. Second by Councilman Kaczynski. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I have a question for Administrator Bill Zimmer. I went through the contract, or at least the preliminary stuff that we've got here, and I couldn't find nothing as far as any type of warranty mentioned for the material or the labor. Is there a longer version of this contract, or?
That's contained in the RFP.
The RFP.
Yeah.
So there is a warranty on material and labor?
Yes, there is.
Yeah, I can't remember exactly what it is. But something enough to be your satisfaction. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9C, from Public Service Administrator Bill Zimmer, 2016 CDBG Water Main Program Change Order Number Two and Payment Certificate Number Three.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
I move council agree with Public Service Administrator Bill Zimmer and concur with his request to approve Change Order Number Two and Payment Certificate Number Three, which is an increase of $8,500.
Support.
All detailed in 9C.
Sorry. Support.
Support by Councilman Musket. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9D, from Public Service Administrator Bill Zimmer, 2016, 2017 Street Repair Program Change Order Number Two and Payment Certificate Number Nine.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
I move council concur with Public Service Administrator Bill Zimmer with regard to his request to approve Change Order Number Two and Payment Certificate Number Nine, a contract defining a decrease of $72,311. Details all defined in 9D dated 10/9/17.
Correction, decrease is $11,315.
Then the approval of Change Order and the Payment Certificate of Number Nine in the amount of $72,39.
Right.
Thirty-nine.
Right.
Second.
Thirty-nine. Yeah.
Support by Councilman Berry.
Switch the numbers.
I skipped the pennies.
Go ahead. He skipped the line.
Support by Councilman Berry. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9E, from Police Chief Lee Gavin, Motorola Solutions Service Agreement.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve the payment to Motorola Solutions in the amount of $14,457.66 to be paid from the Police Department Contractual Services account as outlined in 9E.
Second.
Second by Councilman Abdullah. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9F, from Police Chief Lee Gavin, purchase of two Remington 700 rifle packages and ammunition.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
I move the council concur with Police Chief Gavin with regard to his request to purchase and pay $3,246 for two Remington rifles, plus the addition of $406 cost of ammunition for a total of $7,313, all defined in 9F.
Support.
Support by Councilman Musket. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9G, also from Police Chief Lee Gavin, payment to Matrix Fitness.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
I move council concur with Police Chief Gavin with regard to his request for the approval of a payment of $1,615, which is inclusive of the delivery and setup for the equipment previously purchased. All items detailed in item 9G dated 10/12/17.
Support. Support by Councilman Berry. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda, item 13A, business license renewal for Randy's Robindale Bar, 25122 warrant.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve the business renewal application for Randy's Robindale Bar as outlined in 13A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Musket. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. That ends the regular business portion of our meeting. Any announcements from anybody at the table?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to give a brief thank you to everyone who came out last night for our town hall meeting on opioids, situation critical. We had a really great conversation with our panelists from Access, as well as Safe Coalition, Beaumont, the substance abuse counselors that came, and even somebody from the State Medical Board was with us. And I want to thank Senator Kinesik. He'll be providing legislative updates on this subject as well, but some great connections were made, in particular, hopefully to make inroads into our school community to get the message out, the educational outreach component. So again, I thank everyone who attended, but I want to encourage our community to continue to have this conversation on this very important subject that is very gripping, gripping the community. And so we need to talk about the resources that are available and what we all can do to change the story. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Musket.
I have three items, and maybe someone can answer these questions. I know this is Dearborn, but the entrance ramp to Ford Road from northbound Telegraph, when is that ever going to open?
We brought this up with Great Lakes Water Authority yesterday, and because Rickmon, I think, is the company, but I'll have Dan Brooks give a brief summary, but that was one of the items that we brought up, that this is the contract and improvement that just won't end. Plus, we were very unhappy with the condition north of Ford Road that they've left, but...
Correct. Right. We contacted Great Lakes about a month ago, and the project was shut down because the contractor had violated their MDOT permit from MDOT, and so they put a stop work order on it, since it's in their MDOT right of way, and it's taken them basically a month to resolve the issues and get back on the job.
And that was from my information, because every time I drive there, I say, when is this going to open?
I'm at the same point. I mean, you go north and turn around, but the other thing was the condition that they left a wronger entranceway sign, and I thought that looked terrible and needed to be cleaned up. So as Dan Brooks indicated, we're following up.
Thank you. The other, another one here is about a year ago, I know I spoke about this at a meeting, and I know it's really out of your hands, and, Mr. Mayor, and you've said before you've had luck trying to get this done about the utility pole at Wilson and John Daly. It's got to be now at about 10, 15-degree angle. It's getting worse as it goes by. I don't know if it's DTE or a cable that's stretched across there, but it's getting to the point where it's real bad, and it needs to be looked at for safety-wise.
Can you follow up, Mr. Zimmer, again?
Yeah, I have not followed up with Deborah Kane yet for our representative from DTE, but I will do so. Again, I don't know if it's DTE who owns the pole or not, so... Yeah, I haven't seen it myself yet, but I will make sure to go by that. While you're standing there, this is another question related to the work that's being done on Fairwood, the repaving. I was there again today, and they were supposed to do their finished work today, but the weather obviously held them up. But as I'm in the street, a lot of the substrate there that they put in place for the hole, it's already breaking up and coming out of, there's hunks laying around. I just don't, you know, I think that needs to be looked at again, because I think we'll end up with the same problem we had before if there's loose chunks laying around. It concerns me that we were going to pay a lot of money, and if it's going to break down in three, four years, somebody looks at it first. You know, Wade Trim has an inspector on site every day, and I let you elaborate.
Right. They're not finished cleaning up the subsurface. They still have to wedge it and clean, all that stuff will be cleaned up and chipped away to solid concrete.
Well, they told people they were going to finish it today.
Right.
But the weather stopped them, but if they were going to finish it today, how would they finish it today if all of that's still a mess?
No, they haven't been able to work the last two days because of the rain, but that will be all cleaned up, and they wedge it with asphalt before they resurface it. So that gets chipped away. All the loose concrete is removed.
Yeah, we pay a lot of money for that. I just want to make sure we get what we pay for. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clayton.
I do have one more thing. Gulfview Manor residents have asked about the entrance to Rosemary off of Warren, which was recently redone, and the words that they've used is that they compare it to being like a washboard.
Thank you.
So apparently, it's very rough, the calls that I'm getting. So I guess my question is, you know, with that being recently completed, I would imagine we've inspected that, and it was passed, or how do we address that, or can we address that?
I have not looked at it, no. This is the first I've heard of it. Our highway superintendent does follow up with, that was one of the projects done by E and N, but I will look into it.
All right, thank you.
Any other announcements from anybody at the table?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
I'm excited about the council decision to acquire the Warren Valley Golf Course and the Banquet Center. When we first became aware that there was a potential to sell the properties, it was not in the direction of a golf course. It was intended to be developed as a residential community. Some have been quick to look at the dollar signs that the tax revenues would have drawn from that development. There was some neglect in looking at the backside of the issue of developing a residential community in that area, obviously because of the floodplain and if, as Councilwoman Horvath mentioned, if least little rain you had, you had a flood on both sides of Beach Daly. So we have cooperated with a lot of people. Diane Webb stuck her hand out and said, hey, wait a minute, we've got to do something about this, and came to the council and to the administration to lend her short stick or long stick as to what this was going to develop into. So we now have a piece of property that is invaluable. It's a gem in the making, and as the economy improves, there is every great potential that that use of the golf course will improve with that economy. So all said and done, it's an excellent acquisition in my judgment, and apparently in the judgment of the council and the administration who have come to a conclusion this day, a great day for Dearborn Heights with regard to the acquisition of the Warren Valley Golf Course and its banquet.
Well said. Thank you, Councilman Kaczynski. Any other announcements from anybody at the table? Our clerk Walter Pershevitz.
We are two weeks away from the election. Things are going... Things are going smoothly in the clerk's office. Reminder, if you would like an absentee ballot, please apply as soon as you possibly can, early. Do not wait till the last minute. Got a notice from Bureau of Elections regarding mail delivery, and we have a place to report when we have problems with the mail. We didn't get our mail one day this past week at City Hall. We're also advised that it takes up to a week for the mail to turn around. So, with that being said, if you want an absentee ballot, apply for it right away, come in to the office if possible, that's even better, we don't want anybody to miss the opportunity to vote. Although by law, we are required to mail up until 2:00 PM the Saturday before the election. Think about the turnaround time on that. If we mail it out on Saturday, by the time you get it and you mail it back, the election's over. So please don't miss your opportunity to vote. And if you think you should have gotten one, and you haven't gotten one, call us. We have always made it right. The only thing I can tell you is, I always get phone calls the day of the election and the day after the election telling me that you didn't get your ballot, it's too late. So, with that being said, good luck to all the candidates, and the next time we see each other on TV, we'll have the results. And everybody, have a great election season from here on. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Pershevitz. Any other announcements from anybody at the table? All right, Mike, our library director, go right ahead.
Hello, Council Chair, Council Mayor. I just wanted to announce the Nolan Cemetery dedication. Nolan Cemetery will be dedicated as a Michigan State Historic Site on Friday, November 10th. Join us as we give this landmark its due by unveiling the historical marker, raising a flag for the veterans and tear there. We will also be doing a community cleanup of that same site this Saturday, October 28th at 10:00 AM, weather permitting. Although we will have some lawn implements, bringing your own is preferred. If weather is an issue, we will retry, we will retry at the same time, 10:00 AM on Saturday, November 4th. The cemetery is located at the intersection of Van Born and Madison, east of Telegraph Road. Parking is limited, so just take that into account as you go there that day. For any questions or concerns, call 313-791-3824, and leave a message at my office. I would also like to, on a library note, thank the Friends of the Library, they had a very successful book sale and raised over $3,000 once again for library programs and events and everything like that. So I wanted to thank all the volunteers that helped out, they worked very hard and got it all together. So, thank you very much, I will see you at the library, and see you at the cemetery.
I just want to, I just want to...
Kind of awkward statement, I guess.
I just wanted to compliment the library director, I stop by at the library every once in a while, and today was one of them. Fine-tuned machine over there, so I just wanted to compliment you for a job very, very well done. Everybody was quiet, as I mentioned to you earlier, which I like that. And just, the place was packed, which I liked that too, and as you go from one room to another, you see like just a different program going on in every room. And I go to a lot of libraries, and I got to tell you, this stuff, we definitely have, if not the best, definitely one of the top two or three that I've ever seen. So, congratulations on a job well done.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
See you at the cemetery.
That's not a good thing.
Next, we have our ordinance department director, Jack McIntyre, I believe is going to talk about trunk and treat. I am. This Saturday, October 28th, from 12:00 to 2:00, at the Teljoy Shopping Center, 8641 North Telegraph, starts at 12 o'clock to 2:00. Kids in costume, up to 14 years of age are welcome to come. There will be pumpkin decorating and some other surprises. Salvation Army that weekend is going to be available for all donations of any type, so they'll be out there as well, they're in that same shopping center. And then, on the 31st, here at City Hall, we're also doing a trick or treat in City Hall, Tuesday, October 31st, at 4:00 PM. Kids up to 8th grade should come in their favorite costume, trick or treat all through City Hall. There's going to also be cider, donuts, and lots of treats to hand out, so. All right? Thank you. Oh, Mark Sobel, who is the manager of the Teljoy Shopping Center, is still looking for folks that want to be trunks that day. If you want to reach Mark to volunteer, you can contact him at 313-359-0020. All right? Thank you. See you at the trunk or treat.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
We have a question here, Jack, from...
Mr. McIntyre?
Kozinski?
Would there be any possibility that you could have a truckload of show dogs there that were captured by your animal control department?
You know what, I did reach out, it's really hard for MHS to do the, they don't have the staffing, they already have their own events to bring the animals out, and to have, they do one at the, they do a big one at the zoo, the Detroit Zoo, and then they do a couple other that are pre-scheduled. I've asked every time, in fact, I just called Dr. Caputo's office too, because oftentimes, he takes in a lot of strays at his office, and he houses them there. They may bring some cats that they're looking to get adopted out, they may come for an hour or so on Saturday, so.
Okay.
All right?
I thought there might be an opportunity to show off your wares and all you do things.
Yeah, well, our animal truck will be there on Saturday, we always bring them so that kids that are there can see the truck and see how we operate the animal truck.
With a trick or a treat?
With a trick. It'll be a trick.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other announcements, Chief Lee Gavin?
Real quick update on the famous Riverside High School, correction, Middle School up there. We're having the parking issues with the signs. We talked, I talked to the county today, and there's little signs up there with the P and A are going across. That's all they're going to let us put up there, they put those up, we're not going to be able to put no parking, stopping, standing. What they're going to allow me to do is, we got to apply for a permit, and we're going to see if we can put some educational signs, such as when traffic backs up, you know, overflow, go to Warren Valley, whatever. They said they're going to work on that if we submit a permit, we could put a few on Warren, but we'd also have to put them in the driveway on the school property, they would allow them as educational. But the signs that are up there with the P and line going through it, that's the international symbol for no parking, and that's all they're going to put up there.
Have a question for you. This is probably a perfect opportunity to discuss it, now that we've purchased the Warren Valley Golf Course. Is this something, Mr. Mayor, that we think we can sit down with Wade Trim and the police department, maybe the school board, to find out just how we can make that a little bit more logistic for traffic in that area, now that we have control over it? We don't need Wayne County.
You know, we have that fence that divides it.
We don't own it yet.
Yeah, we could look into something like that once we...
We got to wait for the Wayne County Board to commission the...
Cut that, edit it out.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Musket.
While the chief is up here, and I'd like to piggyback on this traffic situation, how do we go about getting left-hand turn lights at Ford and Gully and Ford and Severley Lane? It seems like you try to make a left-hand turn there between 3:00 and 6:00 in the afternoon, and it gets to be very dangerous with just the regular lights without a left-hand turn light.
You know, we have to go through the county, I'll have our traffic officers call them, they usually do some type of study, and then they have to approve the, you know, the lights being installed up there. So, we'll go through that process, see if they approve it.
Yeah, I've had a lot of complaints that, and even myself, I've noticed it, and I do appreciate any help that you can give us. Thank you.
Okay, we'll work with the traffic bureau in the county, see what we come up with.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I remembered that.
There might be another alternative with cooperation of the school authorities at Crestwood, and that is to release the students at different timeframes, so that the pickup time might be staggered over a prolonged period of time and not have the congestion that you're experiencing now. I don't know that we can impress upon them the importance of the safety factor that goes with this kind of mix of automobiles and pedestrian traffic, but it certainly, in my mind, is a means of discussing with the school authorities, the possibility of staggering the exit of students in a manner that will allow for a lighter traffic load at that point when the school lets out.
We'll make that suggestion to the superintendent and see what they can come up with.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Clayton.
And to continue the conversation on Riverside, since I know I experienced it for several years, and it is quite problematic and challenging, I know parents get frustrated, we want to encourage everyone to, you know, be patient, and remember it's about everyone's safety and getting the children home safely. But I do believe the Crestwood bond recently that was passed does include in their proposal, their plan, something to alleviate that pickup situation. So they wrote that into that, though that will take time, I imagine, like up to two years to get it implemented. But certainly, I would encourage us as, you know, the city to, and I think we do, try to work with the school board as well to address those issues. Again, it's about getting our families home safely.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other announcements, Commissioner Diane Webb?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to say congratulations on your vote tonight on the Warren Valley Golf Course. I think that was, it's an excellent opportunity for you, and I do really appreciate your comments, Councilman Barry, because he's always thanking everybody else, but you know, Mayor, if you wouldn't have seized the day, if you wouldn't have made the move, we couldn't have stopped it. So, we couldn't have done it without you, and I think it was an excellent decision, and I think that, I agree with the comments that Councilman Kozinski made as well, that I think this is something that, for generations to come. You know, long after we're all gone, those people will be protected because of the decision that you made, and all of you council members that stood by him, because he couldn't have done it without you either. So, that was, it really was a group effort, and your corporation council did an outstanding job navigating your way through the trickery of Wayne County, so congratulations to you as well. And so I think that this is a happy day in Dearborn Heights' history, and I'm really glad to even be, play a small part in it. So first of all, I wanted to say that. Secondly, I wanted to let your police chief know that I am there for you. So, as you work through the issues on Warren Road with Riverside, do feel free to call me. I've had a lot of calls from crossing guards over there and parents over there. You know, the issue really is, and I even talked to the principal at the school, you know, I really would have liked them to put up a chain that doesn't let people pull in there and forces them all to go to Warren Valley. I really couldn't get, I couldn't broker a deal with the principal. So I don't know, I'm sure there's bigger things involved, and he's got a reason for having his, you know, his opinion about it, but we need to get to the bottom of it. Our director of engineering is Ron Agazinski, and I spoke with him about it as well, to look at traffic study. You know, the thing is with schools, and we get calls all over Wayne County for traffic that jams up around schools. And the thing is, is that with traffic studies, they're only jammed up at 8:00 in the morning and 3:00 in the afternoon, the rest of the time is fine. So, the federal highway looks at the whole day. So, it's difficult to make a case for just times of the day as it relates to controlling it with traffic signals and that type of thing. So, we, the idea that you mentioned, Councilman Barry, to have the city sit down with the school board, to sit down with the police department, and to work it out, and now that you, well, shortly will be, we're going to vote on this on November 2nd, is our next meeting, so you just got a couple weeks, and then it will be yours. I think you're in a really good position to work out some sort of agreement with them, and that'll bring a lot of relief to everybody in that area. The MDOT road, the Ford Road in Gully, the Ford Road in Gully and Ford Road in...
Severley Lane.
Severley Lane. So, and you know, Ford Road is a state road, so it's MDOTs. Greta Young would be the person that we would really, her name is Greta Young, I can, she runs the TCE, TSC, and Taylor, but I've got her number, I've got her on speed dial, I can call her. And between her and the Wayne County roads, it's because they contract Wayne County to maintain a lot of your state roads, and we can get to the bottom of who makes those decisions, but they will make, they have to do a traffic study, like the chief said, and...
I think the drivers would be indebted to you if you can get that done.
Well, I will work on it, I don't, you know, it's federal highway standards, so, you know, but we'll work towards that end. I can't control those types of things, but we can put everything in process, at least to see if it's doable, and you know, we got to start somewhere. So I think if we get the ball rolling with those folks and get them out there to look at it, and then take it from there, but if we don't ask them to look, then we won't get nowhere.
Without these left-hand turn lights, remember how it used to be, light turns yellow and cars are still going east and west, and somebody wants to make a left, and next thing you know, only one car can make a left, and there's four or five cars left in the left-hand turn lane.
And you probably have the traffic accidents happening there to justify, and they take those into consideration when they look at turn signals. I can tell you, it's very, very difficult to get a turn signal. They're just getting one now, just got one approved at Cherry Hill and Inkster, and it took forever to get. I've been trying to get one on Six Mile, and we've had several fatalities there, Six and Inkster, and still don't have one. So it's really, really a battle. I know another corner, Cherry Hill and Vinoy, and a lot of fatalities there.
And the countdown numbers are really nice, too.
Yeah.
You see those countdown numbers, when you see a 3, 2, 1, well, I got to stop, you know, it's going to turn yellow, so I like that, too.
Right. Yeah, so we'll, you know, we'll, I'll make the call, and get back with you on it, and see what, you know, how that's going to go, but I'll report back to you.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, absolutely. So...
May I have a follow-up question?
Oh yeah, sure.
Going back to Riverside, I had met with the parent group there, as well as the principal and vice principal, last year. We talked about the timing of the light coming out of Warren Valley Golf Course. Because what happens is, parents get all backed up, there's a lot of congestion, people start losing patience and becoming a little more aggressive sometimes. Would you, for the public information, because a lot of the public is calling about this, share what the findings of this traffic study was with that? Is that an option, or if we can have an update?
You know what, let me get you an update, because I don't know when the last time it was that they look at it, but I, you know what, a lot of times, people don't understand, they think you can just change the traffic timing of one light, but you can't. You have to change the traffic timing of all the lights. And so, and you have to be careful that you don't mess up the whole day's traffic for everybody at every light, for the people who are going to be at that light twice a day for 15-minute time periods.
Yeah.
That's the tough part about it. I've got the same, I had the same problem in front of Franklin in Livonia, I had the same problem at Churchill in Livonia. So it's very common around schools, it's happening all over Wayne County, and because of that limited timeframe, it's really a tough case to make. So, we, let me, but do let me ask them, again, to see where they're at with that and get back with you. So I'm going to note those two things. Anybody else have any, anything else for me while I'm here?
Make a Senior Smile Day?
Pardon?
Are you sharing Make a Senior Smile Day?
Oh, I can do that real quick. Another reminder, not this Saturday, but the following Saturday, November 4th, we're doing Make a Senior Smile Day. You know, it's our ninth annual, the folks in Dearborn Heights have been wonderful to come out and help the seniors. We get a lot of requests in Dearborn Heights, especially from the south end. I might get three on the north end, I'll probably get 30 on the south end. So we do meet at Eaton Center, and we meet at the VFW Hall on Inkster and School Craft. Usually, the people that come from Dearborn Heights that want to work on the north end, we have them just meet us at the VFW Hall, because it's actually closer than Eaton. And then everybody that's going to work on the south end, we would have you meet us at Eaton, so that's on November 4th at 8:00 AM. If you have your own rake, bring it, if you don't have one, we'll have some from the county that we can loan out for the day. Anybody who wants to, any businesses out there, or anybody who wants to sponsor it in any way, we always appreciate that. We've had a few sponsors, I can say, our Senator Kenezak is going to donate the donuts for everybody this year, and the halls usually pick up the coffee. DTE wrote us a check for $100, and Ace Hardware over there on 5... DTE wrote us a check for $100 and Hardware over there on Five and Beach donated 500 bags. So every little bit counts, anything that anybody can do, it's wonderful. We appreciate it. If not, you know, whatever we don't get donated, I usually pick up. So, and I don't mind doing that because it's worth it to me. It's a great, great thing that we do every year. I couldn't do it without the volunteers. So, you know, all the schools, Annapolis, Crestwood, those kids all come out, the Honor Societies, the ROTCs, the Teen Counsel, Lisa Hicks Clayton's Teen Counsel's come out, the Master Gardeners come out every year. And your garbage contractor sent us about 30 people last year. So we will be calling GFL as well to see if they can, you know, donate those folks here. So anybody that's hearing this, if you can give us four hours next Saturday to rake leaves for senior, we already signed up your police chief and your fire chief and your ordinance officer and Chrissy usually comes out, so, you know, the city is represented, but the more the merrier. We'd love to have you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Any other announcements, Mark and Carol Slater, or maybe tonight just Mark Slater regarding our veterans dinner?
Hello. Be brief tonight. We were here a couple weeks ago. Just a quick reminder that our annual Veterans Appreciation Dinner is coming up. It's on Thursday, November 9th. This is our 11th annual and we'd really like to encourage everyone from the city of Dearborn Heights to come out and honor our veterans. We have over 40 veterans who are coming and now we need the committee to come out and support and thank them for their service. We have an excellent speaker coming, retired Brigadier General Don Kennedy, who also was the president of the International Colonnus. He will be bringing with him from his home in Indiana, a flag that flew over the Battle of the Bulge, and he will be telling the story of that flag and it's a very intriguing story. So we're getting support. The mayor is coming, Chairman Constance is coming, Diane Webb is coming from the county. So we invite everyone that's watching tonight, please give us a call at 313-561-5778. My wife takes care of the tickets. We still have tickets available and we want, really want to show the veterans the love. That's on Thursday, November 9th, $20 for adults, $10 for students. Thank you.
Mark, thank you.
What time would that be, the dinner?
6:30 p.m.
Thank you.
Any, anyone else? Anyone else?
Motion to adjourn.
Support? Good evening, everyone. Thank you.